Join me in the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We have a roll call, please.
Mr. Prince?
Here.
Mr. Person?
Here.
Ms. Witchy?
Here.
Mr. McGurven?
Here.
Ms. Perez?
Here.
Mr. Pavoni?
Here.
Mr. Corman?
Here.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all present.
Thank you. First item on the agenda is a proclamation.
This is a proclamation for Small Business Saturday. Whereas according to the United States Small Business Administration, there are currently 30.2 million small businesses in the United States, which represent 99.7 percent of all businesses in the United States, and are responsible for 65.9 percent of new jobs created from 2000 to 2017. And whereas the city of Renton celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas small businesses employ 47.5 percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States, and whereas 90 percent of consumers in the United States say Small Business Saturday has a positive impact on their community. And whereas 73 percent of consumers who reportedly shopped small at independently owned retailers and restaurants on Small Business Saturday did so with friends or family. And whereas 89 percent of consumers who were aware of Small Business Saturday said the day encourages them to shop small all year long. And whereas the city of Renton supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now therefore, I, Dennis Law, Mayor of the city of Renton, do hereby proclaim November 24th, 2018, to be Small Business Saturday in the city of Renton. And I encourage all citizens to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. In witness whereof, I have here and to set my hand and cause the seal of the city of Renton to be affixed this 19th day of November, 2018, and it is signed by Mayor Dennis Law.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the proclamation be adopted as read.
Second. It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this proclamation be adopted as read. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? You guys have it. Do we have anybody here to receive this proclamation? Okay, we'll make sure we get a copy to the chamber and urge everybody to shop locally. Our, uh, our small business community is very important to the city, and they do so much in terms of employment and providing valuable services, and so, um, we want to make sure that they're not missed while everybody's shopping online this year. Okay, moving on to administrative report, Jan Hahn.
Thank you. I have two quick items. Uh, we are asking that you help, uh, prevent local residential street flooding by monitoring catch basins near your home and keeping them free of clear, uh, free and clear of leaves and other debris. Second, uh, we have an effort under name to rename the East Side Rail Corridor. Everyone is invited to make suggestions as to a name. Uh, the deadline is November 25th, and you can make your suggestions on the city's social media sites, or you can visit the Parks and Trails Division webpage. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Jan. Uh, moving on to audience comments, we have four people from Reach here to speak, so, uh, you can come right up to the, up to the podium, and, uh, please give your name and city of residence for the record, and, uh, and go, and, you know the drill, Howard.
Yeah, the big thing is, can I get this thing on? I, oh, there it is. We've got it, okay. Thank you. Howard McCombray, I live in the city of Renton, and this lady works downstairs, and, and the people on the dais know who she is. That's Ki- Kissy. Kissy is a lady who's full of charm, a lot of love, a lot of, uh, sweetness. She's kinda like a super mama, and she takes care of our folks downstairs, where we have, I think, probably, um, an iconic institution for western Washington, and it's here in Renton, just like, we also have, uh, a great football team here. We have some Seahawks, well, this is, this is a real Hawk here, she's good. And what we're doing is, just want to thank you for the tremendous support. We couldn't, uh, we could not do the things that we do without support, without your support, and we have received it and we appreciate it. We have, in town, as every town, people who are vulnerable, and the very most vulnerable people that we have in our town are, if you can hear me over here, it's, uh, it's mamas These sweet people let me take their picture, gave me a written permission to use it here, and to thank you for your support, for the constant things we do. These are the folks that we start off downstairs. They come in oftentimes under precarious situations. We have, uh, domestic abuse everywhere in, in our country. I'm sorry to say that's just the case. Uh, these are people who have, uh, reasons to need help, and this city provides support. We have the most secure place downstairs. I cannot get in it without help. I come and lift a little phone, someone comes and, uh, takes me down, and I can take a look and chat with the folks. And so we have people who need help, and it's gonna get cold weather, and it is gonna be very important that we keep providing, I don't care what the economic conditions are we're living in, there are people who are in a lot more precarious situation. And now is the time when we start opening up, and then right after Christmas, we're gonna have a big push, because from now till Christmas is a great push. The one after Christmas is even more challenging, and the need is, if anything, greater. Just want to thank you for your support and your help, and these wonderful people behind me. Someone will tell you some of the things that we have been doing, and what we're asking for is your, not only your personal support, which we have received, and appreciate the mayor coming to all of our stuff. I don't know how you come to everybody's everything, but you came to our Reach Gala, and so did our, our, um, city chief and, um, administrative officer, Bob, and our counselor for the, who handles our law, and all this stuff, and you people all help us, and we appreciate it, and we're gonna need help, because the problems aren't going away. And if we didn't do it, we'd do it. And you're, what we're asking for is you to think of the people you know that you can talk to and influence. If they'll go to reachrenton.org, uh, we can do stuff online. And if not, uh, if you come over to the Center of Hope, they can help you, but Reach Renton is kind of really easy to remember. Okay, I'll turn the time over to the next group.
Good, thank you, Howard. Bianca?
My name is Reverend Bianca Davis Lovelace, and I am the Executive Director of Reach. And I want to give you guys just a, a small snippet of some of the things that we have accomplished only since, uh, May of 20, of this year, 2018. So far, our residents have been able to do their laundry, and the residents' laundry is literally 382 so far since May. Uh, something that's a simple, basic need is being, is cleanliness, is being able to, uh, clean your clothes. Uh, showers, 1,491 showers were given since, uh, May, May of this year. Breakfast, 2,080, 2,869 breakfasts were given to our, uh, clients just at the Center of Hope. And I have not even gone into the Renton Meal Coalition, this is just the Center of Hope right now. Lunches, 2,278 meals were given since, uh, since May of this year. And as far as housing, and our clients being able to transition into some form of housing, that has been 111 clients that have been able to transition from homelessness, and now they're in, into housing. As far as transition and from homelessness and into housing, we have served many, many clients here in the Renton community. However, in the midst of us serving, uh, our population, we have a waiting list of people who are in need of our services. We literally have a waiting list. For our meal program, we have seen an increase of clients who need meals. We, at one time, we were serving 65 people. Now it has increased to 100. So far, the county and United Way has funded us for 2019. But it seems like we are having issues receiving funding the traditional way from the city of Renton. I ask for the sake of our brothers and sisters who are homeless here in Renton, please consider funding Reach. We thank you for the ways in which you have helped us throughout the years, but I'm telling you, we are in critical, critical need. The more that the sweeps are happening in Seattle, more people are coming to our doorsteps. We literally had somebody walk all the way from Seattle to Harambe, where we are located, uh, at our shelter. Uh, walked from Seattle in the middle of the night and asked for shelter. And I got a call at least at 2:00 in the morning from my night shelter supervisor, and to approve whether or not th- this couple and their child can come and, and spend the night, and I, and I approved it right then and there. It, we, there's no intake, let's just get them in, into our shelter. So this is the things that are literally showing up at our doorstep, and we have a waiting, a major, major waiting list. So I just really want to emphasize that the homeless crisis is not slowing down anytime soon, it's only unfortunately getting worse. Thank you for listening.
You bet. Thank you. Uh, Karen and Lee Wimberly?
Good evening. My name is Karen Wimberly. I've been a resident of Renton for approximately 40 years. I've been a volunteer with the Reach Meal Coalition for about six years. The Meal Coalition is operated as a direct food distribution organization as outlined by the Washington State Department of Public Health. When I put on this Reach Meal Coalition apron every week, I'm not alone. I'm only one part of a partnership that's making nutritious meals available to our neighbors in need here in Renton. My partners in this activity include churches, local businesses such as McDonald's, individuals, other nonprofits such as the Union Gospel Mission, who help provide us with food, community and municipal funding sources including BECU, Renton Public Schools, and the city of Renton, an important one of our partners. These partners are providing food, supplies, toiletries, hats, gloves, and blankets coming soon to us this time of the year, hundreds of hours of volunteer time cooking and serving meals, friendly faces, conversation, sympathetic ears to listen to stories, to store and cook some of the food, which is right here in the basement of City Hall, in our sister program, the, um, Center of Hope. And up until the end of December of this year, a place to serve meals, Monday through Friday mornings, and Friday, Saturday, and Sunday evenings. Nowhere else in Renton is a free meal available at those times that Reach provides food. Reach needs the partnership that the city of Renton has offered in the past. Our hungry neighbors need the partnership of the city now more than ever. Our numbers at meals, as Reverend Bianca said, are up to over 100 on some nights, and there's no indication that they'll be dropping soon. We need the city's moral support, but we also need the city's financial support. You are an, you are an essential partner in our joint effort to provide food to those who need it in our community. As I heard Congresswoman Pramila J. Paul say at a fundraising dinner last evening right here in Renton, "We must be present to the suffering we see around us." Please continue your support of our programs. I'd like to close with some comments, uh, from our clients who were asked a few months ago to share what the meal program means to them. So Donna had to say, "It means I don't have to worry or go hungry." Daniel and James, a father and son, both adults, said, "A very good source of nutrition, coffee and restroom facilities." Jason said, "The program does not take days off. I feel safe leaving my belongings behind if I need to step outside. They serve quality meals, they are super nice, wholesome environment, non-discriminating, everyone is always smiling." Thankful for the interaction with community. And Justin said, "Without the meal program, which does a lot more than just meals, I personally would not be able to eat most of the time. Not only that, but they are friendly and courteous, very kind, and try to fill needs as they can, such as clean socks, toothbrushes, and other toiletries. And an ear to bend when I need advice, or merely someone to talk to when feeling alone in this world. I believe they do a whole lot more for this community than even they realize. Plus, the corny jokes from Lee are my personal favorite part." So please, keep Reach in your funding in the upcoming year. And if, um, if I may, I'd like to leave a full set of the client comments for the record.
Great, thank you very much.
My name is Lee Wimberly. Um, I'm the joke teller that Karen mentioned in, uh, the previous comment by Justin. Uh, Karen, uh, like Karen, I've lived in Renton since 1977 in three different homes. In this grand partnership that Karen has referred to, I find each person brings, uh, a, brings different talents and different capabilities for contribution. Lacking any real useful talent, I bring my corny jokes and clean jokes, uh, to, to the, to the effort. The guests who Karen, uh, references occasionally ask me to share his favorite joke, the one about the two pilots. I find that humor is a precious commodity to those living without shelter. I know this because occasionally a guest will seek me out to share a joke that he or she has heard. Just last Friday, a guest, uh, asked Karen where I was, because he didn't see me in the serving line. He then caught me as he was heading out the door, and he immediately launched into the joke that he wanted to share. What is my point, you may be asking yourself at this point? Sometimes, in the midst of the big problems that we face of location, budget, personnel, it is easy to overlook the little things that a personal face-to-face does for the people. The personal contacts that staff, staff and volunteers at the Meal Coalition provide is a, is a vital, is a vital touch. And I can assure you, I do not hold a candle to the Coalition staff person whose name is And in with these personal contacts, we can look into the face of the most important partner of all, and that is of the divine. Reach is a coalition of faith-centric organizations that recognize who most, who our most important partner is. And Reach staff and volunteers are living out that partnership in the actions we take, the time and resources that we bring to the pain of the homelessness. We are present to the suffering we see around us. As evidence of this radical claim that I've just made, I would like to also read a few of the comments from the guests. Uh, this gentleman, uh, has been around for five years. He says, "It's a place to get off the streets, if only for a short while, a nice meal, friendly connections, and a warm smile." This gentleman's been with us for about a year and a half. Survive to the next week, and some chat, plus a cinnamon Danish helps to pretend to be real people." Uh, this gentleman's been around for about two years. "It is a reliable meal with, with good people. They provide for the people need, who need it the most." This person's been around for about five years, been homeless for about five years. "It means I could come for a very nice meal or breakfast and enjoy talking to people who run the program. I enjoy their company. Thank you." And this person, been homeless for about two years. "It gives me hope and comfort knowing that this program exists. Thank you very much."
Thank you. Appreciate you being here. Okay, um, is John Glenn here from the downtown? Okay, John, we do have somebody for, to receive the proclamation. Dave's here, good, uh, John, if you'd like to come up, and Dave's gonna get a picture of you with Megan. And then, uh, you're welcome to say a few words.
I hand up a smile. Mayor, Law, members of the council, I come here with two things tonight on my agenda. The first is to say thank you. Uh, thank you for the partnership. Uh, we cannot begin to tell you how much your faith and your trust, uh, in a small group of citizens and business owners and downtown boosters means. It's because of you that we're even able to do things like the Small Business Saturday and Holiday Tree Lighting event that we're gonna be helping to host this Saturday. And it's because of you that we are able to continue to do events like wine walks, outdoor concerts, ladies' nights, and Halloween parties that make downtown Renton a better place to be. For those of you that I have talked to one-on-one, you know that I am a big proponent of partnership, that I am a firm believer that a rising tide raises all boats. And so I'm so thankful to be standing here before you and to invite you, here's the second part, uh, to continue to join us, come to the events, and please continue to support the work that we're doing in the downtown core. Thank you again.
Yeah, thank you, John. I want to thank you too, and the downtown, members of the downtown partnership, because you're, you're playing a very important role to what it is we're trying to achieve in the revitalization of the downtown. So, thank you for your efforts and the enthusiasm, and, you know, the activity is just great. I mean, people are loving the, the act, the, the different events that are taking place, and we're getting so much positive feedback from that, so, thank you very much.
Couldn't do it without you. Thank you.
Okay. And again, I want to thank our friends from Reach that are here tonight. Uh, you guys do a great service to the community, and, and we do want to partner with you as much as we can, because it's, uh, as you said, Reverend Lovelace, it's not getting better, it's, it's, it's really bad everywhere, and so we really appreciate that, so, thank you for being here. Okay, moving on to consent agenda, we have six items for council consideration. Are there any items that council member like pulled for discussion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move that we concur in the consent agenda.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Person, and the council concur with the consent agenda. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it. Okay, moving on to unfinished business, Mr. Prince.
No unfinished business.
Okay, Mr. Person?
Uh, yes, the Finance Committee has got a report, I think, or two.
Should I read the report first on the Committee on Committees?
Uh, yes, please.
Okay. So, the first, um, committee report tonight is the 2019 Council Committee Assignments. The Committee on Committees recommends the following Council Committee Assignments for 2019. Finance Committee on the first and third Mondays at 4:00 PM with, um, Armando Pavoni as chair, Ed Prince as vice chair, and Carolyn Witchy as member. Public Safety Committee on the second Monday of the month at 5:30 PM with Randy Corman as chair, and Armando Pavoni as vice chair, and Ed Prince as member. Community Services Committee on the first Monday of the month at 5:30 PM. Carolyn Witchy as chair, Ryan McGurven as vice chair, and Randy Corman as member. Utilities Committee on the fourth Monday of the month at 5:30 PM. Ruth Perez as chair, Carolyn Witchy as vice chair, Ryan McGurven as member. Planning and Development Committee on the second and fourth Mondays of the month at 4:30 PM. Ed Prince as chair, Ruth Perez as vice chair, and Armando Pavoni as member. And Transportation Committee on the first and third Mondays of the month at 5:00 PM. Ryan McGurven as chair, Randy Corman as vice chair, and Ruth Perez as member. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
Mayor?
Mr. Person?
I move the, the council, uh, concur in the recommendation of the finance, of the, of the Committee on Committees.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. Person, I think. Second by Ms. Witchy, that council concur with the Committee on Committees assignments. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it.
The first Finance Committee is regarding approval of claims and payroll vouchers. The Finance Committee approves the following payments. Accounts payable total payment of $7,692,993.88 for vouchers 10088, 369750 through 369751, 369765 through 370073. Payroll benefit withholding vouchers 5925 through 5934, 369752 through 369764, and two wire transfers. Payroll total payment of $1,474,095.66 for payroll vouchers, which include 692 direct deposits and nine checks, October 16th through 31st, 2018 pay period. And Kidder Matthews total payment of $41,903.32 for vouchers 5752 through 5775. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
This voucher run just three little things. Uh, we again are, pay our monthly jail bill to score, which is for $497,367.67. And then our dispatching for emergency services to Valley Communications for $441,553.67. And to the Washington Association of Police Chiefs, this is, the smallest one is $25,460.87. But this is for electronic home monitoring equipment, and each day that we use one of these machines, it saves us about $300 a day in jailing. So over the years, this is, that $25,000, along with our employee costs, saves us a lot of money. With that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Finance Committee report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Guys have it.
The second Finance Committee report is regarding the approval of the 2019 reclassifications and Commander Deputy Chief Physical Fitness Premium. The Finance Committee recommends concurrence of the staff recommendation to approve the reclassification of 24 employees in recognition of higher levels of duties and responsibility as listed below. In the ASD department, reclassify the Financial Services Manager position to grade M33. Reclassify the Service Desk Supervisor position to Client Technology Services and Support Supervisor at grade A30. Reclassify the Tax Auditor position to Tax and Licensing Program Manager at grade M27. Reclassify the Senior Systems Analyst position to grade A29. Reclassify the Systems Analyst position to grade A26. And reclassify the Business Systems Analyst position to Senior Business Systems Analyst at grade A27. And the HRM department, reclassify the human, Senior Human Resources Analyst position to grade M25. And reclassify the Human Resources Analyst and Risk Management Analyst positions to grade M23. And the CED department, reclassify the Property and Technical Services Manager position to grade M33. And the Police Department, reclassify the Commander position to grade M38. And reclassify the Deputy Chief position to grade M46. In addition, increase the Commander and Deputy Chief Physical Fitness Premium to 3%. And this is signed by the committee chair and members.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, Mr. Person.
Uh, this is a program that our Human Resources Division takes on, uh, very year, every year, and they take it very seriously. They go out and look what's going on in- They go out and look what's going on industry-wide so that we're staying within a range so keep employees so they like to stay here. It really makes a lot of difference every time we lose one of these employees because they're getting paid someplace else a lot more. So, it's a very important task they take on and I want to just offer my thanks to the Human Resources because I know they put a lot of time and effort into this. So, that, I move the council concur in the recommendation of the Finance Committee.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that council concur with the Finance Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. And thank you for your comments. They worked very hard on the reclassifications and they want to make sure too, you know, one of the things that we've done over the years is try to improve our efficiency, which means we actually changed job descriptions and we're paying people out of class and so the HR Department has worked really hard to evaluate every one of those recommendations. So, thank you for that work.
That's it for me.
You're up, Megan. Oh, I guess, no, I guess I'm up, huh? Ms. Witchy.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, the Utilities Committee has one Committee Report.
The Utilities Committee Committee Report is regarding Agreement 2666 EHS with Public Health Seattle and King County for local hazardous waste management program projects. The Utilities Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to execute the Community Services Agreement 2666 EHS with Public Health Seattle and King County to accept $66,111.12 in non-matching grant funds in 2018 for local hazardous waste management program projects. And this is signed by the Committee Chair and Vice Chair.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Witchy.
I move that council concur with the recommendation of the Utilities Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Witchy, second by Mr. Corman, that council concur with the Utilities Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it. So I want you to know, Mr. McIrvin, before I move to you, that Megan wanted me to pass over you. And I don't know if that's because there are a few reports here, but this is your turn.
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor. As you recall, there was a lengthy agenda at the last meeting with me, the lengthy number of Committee Reports.
That's right.
Okay.
You can do it.
So, the first Planning and Development Committee Committee Report is regarding adjustments to the 2019-2020 Fee Schedule, school impact fees, and extension of ADU fee reductions. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence with the staff recommendation to adopt a resolution to adopt capital facilities plans for the Renton, Kent, and Issaquah School Districts and to incorporate the following requested fee amounts for each district into the Renton 2019-2020 Fee Schedule. I will read this table for you all for reference. Renton 2017, single family is $7,772. And 2018, $6,877, a change in dropping $895. Multifamily, $1,570. And 2018, $2,455, and that is an increase in $885. For Kent, single family in 2017 is $5,235, and in 2018 is $5,397, a change of increase in 162. Multifamily is 2017 is $2,267, and 2018, $2,279, and that's a change of $12. And Issaquah, single family 2017 is $8,762, and in 2018, $15,276, with a change of $6,514. Multifamily in 2017 is $3,461, and 2018, $4,399, with a change of 900, increase in $938. Additionally, the Planning and Development Committee recommends the concurrence in the staff recommendation to adopt a resolution extending the sunset date for accessory dwelling units ADUs, fee reductions, waivers to December 31st, 2020. Finally, the Committee recommends that resolutions regarding these matters be presented for adoption. This is signed by the Committee Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the next Planning and Development Committee Report is regarding Merrill Gardens at Renton Addition, Multifamily Housing Project Tax Exemption Agreement. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in staff's recommendation to approve the Multifamily Housing Project, Housing Property Tax Exemption Agreement that addresses the terms and conditions for the Merrill Gardens at Renton Addition to receive a partial property tax exemption upon completion and to authorize the mayor to execute said agreement in substantially the same form. And this is signed by the Committee Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the next Planning and Development Committee Report is regarding City Code Title IV Development Regulations, 2018 Docket Group Number 13. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt the 2018 Title IV Docket Group 13. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the items listed below be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. For Group C, Number D-149, Mobile Food Vendors, Number D-150, Townhouse Review, Number D-151, Parking Standards, and Number D-152, Service and Social Organizations. For Group D, Number D-153, Administrative Code Interpretations, and Number D-154, Multifamily Incentives, Tax Exemptions, and Waive Fees. And this is signed by the Committee Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the next Planning and Development Committee Report is regarding the 2018 Comprehensive Plan Amendments. The Planning and Development Committee concurs with the Staff and Planning Commission recommendation to amend the Comprehensive Plan with its associated map and text amendments. The Planning and Development Committee further recommends that ordinances for the following items be prepared and presented for first reading when they are complete. Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment and Rezone from Residential High Density with R-14 zoning to Commercial Mixed Use with Center Village zoning to support the Renton Housing Authority's efforts to create affordable housing opportunities in the Sunset area. The Comprehensive Plan Land Use Map Amendment to correctly identify the areas where the commercial neighborhood zone implements the residential high-density land use designation and text amendment to amend the capital facilities element as requested by the Renton Regional Fire Authority to reference the RFA's standards to cover document. And this is signed by the Committee Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, and the final Planning and Development Committee Report is regarding Wireless Communication Facilities Exemption in the Right-of-Way. The Planning and Development Committee recommends concurrence in the staff and Planning Commission recommendation to adopt a revision to RMC 4-5-060 in order to eliminate an exemption for wireless communication facilities located in the right-of-way. The Committee further recommends that this ordinance be prepared and presented for first reading when it is complete. And this is signed by the Committee Chair and Member.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that the council concur with the Planning and Development Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that council concur with this Planning and Development Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir.
I have one additional item that I think we need to revisit. The Planning and Development Committee, the first planning, because I want you to read it again, obviously. The first Planning and Development Committee Report that we passed had one error in the table. It should have said 2018-2019 instead of 2017-2018. I would move that we amend it and pass it with that amendment.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Corman, that the Planning and Development Committee Report be amended and we don't have a number on what's the title on that.
That is the Committee Report Regarding Adjustments to the 2019-2020 Fee Schedule.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay.
That's all.
Thank you. Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Services Committee has one report to present.
Yes, you're right. Please hold. Okay, the Community Services Committee Report is regarding the Lake to Sound Trail Interlocal Agreement. The Community Services Committee recommends concurrence in the staff recommendation to approve the Lake to Sound Trail Interlocal Agreement between King County and the City of Renton. And this is signed by the Committee Chair and Members.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move that the council concur with the Community Service Committee Report.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Ms. Witchy, that council concur with the Community Services Committee Report. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Okay, Mr. Pavoni.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Corman.
No unfinished business, Mr. Mayor.
All right, moving on to legislation and we have a ton. We have four resolutions and a bunch of ordinances.
Okay, the first resolution is a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the mayor and city clerk to enter into an interlocal agreement with King County regarding design, construction, operation, and maintenance of the Lake to Sound Trail, Segment A, within Renton city limits.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Perez.
I move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Ms. Perez, second by Mr. Corman, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The next resolution is a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, extending the sunset date to December 31st, 2020 for reduced development fees, including transportation and parks impact fees, utility system development charges, also known as utility hookup fees, and land use reviews, and building fees for accessory dwelling units.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
The next resolution is a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting by reference the current capital facilities plans for Kent, Issaquah, and Renton School Districts.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
Just want to note, this ordinance does not, it is correct.
Resolution.
Resolutions, thank you, is by reference not different than the amended Committee Report we passed earlier. So, this is accurate, this is what I'm looking at. So, with that, I move that the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. We should note that Renton is, Renton School District's the only one that's lowering the impact fee. We're proud of them.
So, the final resolution is a resolution of the City of Renton, Washington, amending the City of Renton Fee Schedule for the years 2019 and 2020.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Person.
Move the resolution be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Person, second by Ms. Perez, that this resolution be adopted as read. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, the first ordinance for first reading, it looks like we only have one ordinance for first reading, is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsection 45060.e.2 of the Renton Municipal Code, eliminating the exemption from permits for wireless facilities in the right-of-way and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading at the next council meeting. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it.
Okay, we have one ordinance for first reading and advancement to second and final reading. This ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 42060.c, 42080.a.6, 42080.a.13, 42080.a.16, 42080.a.18, 42080.a.73, 42110.a, 42120.a, 42120.b, 49200.b, and sections 44150, 44160, 41110, 41140, 41160, 411130, and 411190 of the Renton Municipal Code by amending townhouse regulations, including adding residential mixed-use development standards and adding and amending definitions and providing for severability and establishing an effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be placed on second and final reading tonight.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be advanced to second and final reading this evening. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The ayes have it.
Okay, we will read. Ordinance a second time. An ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, amending subsections 42060.c, 42080.a.6, 42080.a.13, 42080.a.16, 42080.a.18, 42080.a.73, 42110.a, 42120.a, 42120.b, 49200.b, and sections 44150, 44160, 41110, 41140, 41160, 411130, and 411190 of the Renton Municipal Code by amending townhouse regulations, including additional residential mixed-use development standards, and adding and amending definitions and providing for severability and establishing effective date.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. McIrvin.
I move that this ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. McIrvin, second by Mr. Pavoni, that this ordinance be adopted as read. This requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witchy.
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
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 Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Eyes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance, the final ordinance, is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, authorizing the issuance of one or more series of limited tax general obligation bonds in the aggregate principal amount of not to exceed $15 million to finance costs related to parks, trails, and recreational facility improvements, and to pay costs of issuing the bonds, providing the form, terms, and covenants of the bonds, providing for the disposition of the proceeds of the sale of the bonds, delegating authority to approve the method of sale to the final terms of the bonds, and providing for other matters regulating thereto.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McIrvin, that this ordinance be, excuse me, adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witchy.
Aye.
Mr. McIrvin.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Pavoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor. All ayes.
Eyes have it.
The next ordinance is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, establishing the property tax levy for the year 2019 for general city operational purposes in the amount of $21,300,000.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. Corman, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witschey.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Povoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it.
Okay, the next ordinance, the final ordinance, is an ordinance of the City of Renton, Washington, adopting the biennial budget for the years 2019-2020 in the amounts of $2,64, $264,802.71 and $260,252,613, respectively.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Mr. Prince.
I move the ordinance be adopted as read.
Second.
It's been moved by Mr. Prince, second by Mr. McGurven, that this ordinance be adopted as read, and this requires a roll call.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Person.
Aye.
Ms. Witschey.
Aye.
Mr. McGurven.
Aye.
Ms. Perez.
Aye.
Mr. Povoni.
Aye.
Mr. Corman.
Aye.
Roll call, Mr. Mayor, all ayes.
Eyes have it. Thank you very much, Megan. Moving on to new business, Mr. Prince.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Um, on Thursday and Friday, November 22nd and 23rd, um, there'll be no meetings, um, at City Hall because it's a Thanksgiving holiday. On Monday, November 26th, there'll be no meetings because it's a council holiday. Then on Monday, December 3rd, at 5:30 PM, the Committee Hall will meet, um, 5:30 in the Conferenceant Center. We have two items on the agenda. River Day's recap slash 2019 planning and council policies update. That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Person.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Uh, first thing I need to announce, the Finance Committee on Monday, December 3rd at 3:00 PM in the council conference room. Three issues, uh, 2,800 townhouse fee waiver requests, 2018 year-end budget amendment, and emerging issues in finance. And on a completely separate issue, that I just want to, I think it's an issue that the council may be interested in. As everybody knows, I'm on the Washington State Crime Lab's Investigation Council. And one of the things I learned this weekend, or this week at the last meeting, is that the process, we, we've been so much in the news about the rape kits, and they're sent in, in a, in a box about this size, you know, that thick. And what happens to those kits, they go into the, the crime lab, they process them and send them out, have it processed, and then that comes back to the lab. Then they send that box back to the, the department that is, that sent it in. They have to hold those in refrigeration and frozen for 99 years. And we, we are going to have a storage problem. So, I, I just, it just as we go forward, it's an issue that obviously I've talked to the police chief about. And I think the lab, state lab, is coming up with a, a better way of handling it. But we're still going to be storing stuff for 99 years. And it just, this is going to be a tremendous impact on, on the city for years, years to come. And, uh, I'll keep you, I just got reappointed to the committee, so I'll keep you informed. But I thought, those are the interesting things that we pass things and we don't have any understanding of the total impact. So, that's it.
Okay, thank you. Ms. Witschey.
Uh, no new business, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Mr. McGurven.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Ms. Perez.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The Community Service Committee that was going to take place on Monday, December 3rd, has been canceled.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Povoni.
No new business, Mr. Mayor.
And Mr. Corman.
Yes, Mr. Mayor, just like to announce a Transportation Committee meeting on December